Included there in the marketplace profile of the recent week. There's a business summary in here as well and just talks a little bit about existing businesses and under businesses employees, those types of things, the types of businesses that are currently existing. We did look at the unemployment for Boone County. We've got some information in there for you about that as well. Obviously, that'll be the key. Merritt was the source of that, the Missouri Economic Research and Information Center. And then on the next page, we talked a little bit about your workforce, population per capita income, civilian labor, I think credit was the source for that. And then your top employers in the area. That's always a big question, not only for retailers, but also for people looking at hotel investment as well, to be able to know what the demand generators might be from some of your larger employers in the area. And so, we have a list of those here and the number of employees that they have as well. And then, of course, education is an important piece of that. And so, we put some information in here about the education. We talked a little bit about the colleges in the area and, of course, the school system here in Centralia as well and a number of things that go on there. Transportation, industrial infrastructure, that's an important part of this as well. So, we highlighted interstates and highways in the area, to and from the area, so people can get a feel for how people are traveling to and from your area. We talked a little bit about rail and air, obviously, and there's information. Typically, investors are looking to find out how close you are, how far you are away from the commercial air service. And so, we put some information in there about the Columbia Regional Airport. Local incentives typically come into play with a lot of these types of projects. And so, we put some information in there about the types of things. You have an enhanced enterprise zone here, obviously, in Centralia. So, there are a couple of other things that we put in there about local incentives as well. So, the supply and demand analysis, the first part of that, page 39, actually talks a little bit about the Missouri travel analysis. And so, it kind of takes a look at the state overall from the Missouri report. Again, some of this information comes from Smith Travel Research. But it talks about lodging and shows that lodging demand is up, occupancy is up, average day rate is up, and revenue per room is up, or per available room is up as well. So, just some statistics for you in general about Missouri, so that as you look at the next things, you can kind of see a comparison between Centralia and Missouri as we look at some of this information to get a good feel for that. And then, again, retail market potential. The next section just talks about Centralia, gives a little history of the area so people can get familiar with the area. A lot of this information came from various websites here, locally in pictures as well to talk about the area itself and kind of history of the area and some of the types of things that you have here for not only residents, but also for people who are traveling to the area for tourism to be a part of as well. So, you'll see some of those things that we do in that as well. Angels Festival, some of the other things as well. The next section is really an important part, obviously, of the process, and that's the local interviews. We do include the local interviews, the comments in here. We do not, obviously, use names of the company or names of the people for obvious reasons, but we do have their information included in here. So, I can tell you, overall, you'll see, obviously, very positive comments. You will see that people believe that there is a need, in some cases, people would say significant need for this type of a facility. People overall, if you look at the comments, felt like, right now, the community is losing out on some opportunities. People traveling, people being sent, obviously, because there isn't really an option for this type of stay, sending people to Columbia or to Mexico or other places. And so, not only are you missing out on the overnight revenues for the stay, but you're also missing out on the restaurant activity and shopping activity and those types of things. One thing I mentioned at dinner that's probably also something that needs to be mentioned here, there is some cautioning here, even if it wasn't in the local interviews, we would mention that to you. There are certain segments of folks who are willing to stay in Columbia, no matter what you have here. You could have the Candlewood here and they won't stay here. And the reason that is, is because of the same thing happens in Mowley and other rural communities, because there's an attraction there with more restaurants, there's the attraction there with the nightlife, those types of things. So, from the business traveler perspective, or from people who are coming in for some of your festivals, or people are coming in to visit people in a nursing home, or for weddings or funerals, those types of things, most of those folks, particularly business travelers, which you have a significant demand for, are more interested in location. And we'll see that in here. They're more interested in being a convenient location than they are those. But there is a segment that will, even if you have a nice hotel here, will continue to go to Columbia because there are things that are drawing in there other than just the hotel itself. So, want to mention that, and you'll see that also reflected in here. You will see some ratings on local opportunities and also other opportunities in terms of how people are rating those. You'll also see some information in here about the need for meeting space and banquet space. They talk a little bit about the number of people that that should be able to accommodate. They talk about the types of technology and things like that. That should be included in that. So, you'll see all of those. One thing that we found interesting, which is pretty typical for this type of scenario, is branding wasn't necessarily as important. You'll see in the comments that we ask people to rate on a scale from one to 10, a number of different things. In the comments, you'll see them rate location as 10 out of 10. Convenience is the thing, right? At the end of a long day, people just want to go put their head on a pillow, go to sleep, get up the next morning, take a shower, eat a light breakfast, and move on. So, or if they're here for a few days, you know, they don't want to drive 35 minutes, right? So, you'll see that in the comments as well. That's a big complaint that people have heard in the area, that when people are done with a long day's work, they've got to drive another 30 minutes, 35 minutes to get to their hotel. That's a complaint that we hear. So, nine out of 10 was pretty common in terms of the rating for the proximity. The other thing that we saw in here that was pretty round through was that brand itself doesn't necessarily make a difference. So, people felt like brand wasn't a huge thing. They felt like as long as it was a clean, well-maintained hotel, that would be enough, especially if, and we'll see that in here reflected in the comments, especially if they had a good experience on their first day. So, those are the types of things that we heard from the employers in the area and others in the area that were part of the interview process. And so, you'll be able to read those as well in the report here. One thing I wanted to highlight too was the lodging rate and supply. You'll see later on in the reports that we ran, there's a large group, what's called a response report, and I'll get to that here in just a second. But that's a large group of hotels that report overall information that was used as a part of the report. But these are the ones that we focus on in terms of looking at the daily rate, the average day rate. The reason we did that is because these are the ones that we heard from people in the community that people were staying at. People would come to Centralia for business or come for tourism, other reasons, they were going to stay at these places, and people were sending them to stay at these places. So, we wanted to talk about that. We mentioned at dinner, this is a little bit tricky for us sometimes as we look at these comparisons. In more rural areas like we live in, typically, I know you've met with Cobblestone, there are a number of other folks out there like that. In rural setting, those are more mid-level, mid to high-level types of facilities. So, we don't want to compare them to any Conalodge, for instance, or some of the more economy brand hotels, not to pick on Conalodge, but those types of things. So, that's one of the things we try to do with this analysis, is to show what we believe to be a close comparison in terms of Hampton and the Ferret Hill and those types of things. So, what you'll see here, I think, just looking at it, your lowest rate somewhere there's $59.99, which is a double bed at the Country Heart in Mexico. Their highest rate is $109.99 for a king. So, your average rate is somewhere between $74.99 and $147.32 in the competitors that people are currently using. And then, you see below that, the existing room capacity, so it talks about the number of rooms just available in those competitors, and then the number of miles to give to each of those competitors as well. So, we believe, obviously, there's some discounting that's included in that. And obviously, there's discount, hotel.com, Speedy, those types of things, there are discounts for larger groups, ten or more people, there's Lincoln, you know, there's all kinds of different things that get discounted. So, those things are reflected in there as well. We think that you have a high level of corporate and commercial demand right now. So, we think that the ADR could be a strong, a strong thing here. Again, because of that convenience, people are looking for convenience. And so, we think that it will help drive that average day rate up in the market. So, based on the local interviews, you'll see there that it's clear that there's unaccommodated lodging demand in the market and that, you know, people are taking those dollars elsewhere. So, we think that a hotel that would exceed the, you know, the six closest existing competitors would have a high margin of success in the area. So, obviously, you have a large amount of tourism as well, so that certainly lends into that as well. So, the next few pages you're going to see here is what we call the STAR report, comes from Smith Travel Research. And this looks at data of those other hotels over a period of time. So, you can see a number of different charts here. One of the reasons why I mentioned it dinner, one of the reasons why we use this particular data is it looks at over a six-year period, and it does also break it out by month. And so, we feel like that's important. We do know that other people will actually make phone calls, et cetera, to local hotels and gather this type of information. The danger in that is that, as you all know, particularly in rural areas like we live in, a lot of times you'll have a pipeline come through, or you'll have a major construction project, and so, those will skew those numbers. And so, by looking at it over a period of time, you can see those outliers. The last thing we want to do, obviously, is to take a high occupancy rate and a high average daily rate based on a construction project or a pipeline coming through the area and have an investor making investment based on that. So, that's what you'll see here in these numbers, it's over a six-year period. One of the things that's also interesting that we included, I looked at this earlier when we were having dinner as well, because there was a conversation about what room charges are in particular days. So, we included a day of the week analysis in there for you as well. So, you can see that, obviously, you can tell when it's football season, you can tell when your football game's going on, you can tell when there's basketball, all of those things. So, you'll see that reflected in the average day rate as well. This response report, I mentioned to you a little bit earlier, these are the hotels in the region that do report to Smith Travel. And you can see the months that they reported and the years that they reported there. Some report, some do not. Some report monthly, some report annually. So, that's what this is. It gives you an idea of the types of hotels that reported in the data that we were using in this comparison. The nice thing about this particular piece and this comparison is it gives you a uniform methodology for comparison purposes. So, again, we're not just making phone calls to a hotel that happens to be busy, giving this information. We're making a uniform comparison across a period of time that we believe gives us better findings in that study. So, this page here is the methodology page and the glossary. So, as you're looking through some of those things and you're confused by some of the terminology they use in there, that's in there to help you with that as well. And believe me, it gets confusing. Local competitors was another thing that we looked at, and so, we included information. Again, this is based off the local interviews and where people were telling us, people who are traveling to Centralia for business or other occasions are staying. And so, like the days in Mexico is the first one you see there. So, we put some information there, picture information off their websites to describe it. And then, also, we use the TripAdvisor travel rating system. And so, we felt like that was important for you to see as well. So, we've got all of those listed there for you. And then, the last and probably one of the more important things as well is the recommendations. And so, you can see there, we give kind of the conclusion in terms of what we learned from the demand generators, what that information told us, what the local interviews told us in terms of demand. We feel like a mid-level hotel would be ideal. The amenities that we're recommending there would be ideal in terms of the business demand that you have here as well as, we talked a little bit about that at dinner. One of the things that we would recommend is a pool. And obviously, from a business perspective, sometimes that sounds strange, business people don't typically care about a pool in a hotel or not. However, you have a lot of people traveling here for tourism, a lot of kids traveling for those types of things. So, we recommend that to help keep people there as well. So, you can see some of the recommendations we've made. One is 33 rooms. We did that based on the company that you were working with in terms of their various different sizes of facilities that they have. Obviously, other hotels that look at this may have different demands, or different, excuse me, different drawings and styles that they build. Amenities, we had mentioned business center, banquet space to accommodate people, we heard that through the local interview process, the hot breakfast. They do offer a bar lounge area, fitness room, and they did offer the pool. So, rate-wise, one of the things that we saw, within 15% of the average day rate, and as far as I showed you earlier, is about $105.19. So, we're suggesting a recommended range of $109 to $120. We feel like, for a lot of reasons, obviously, convenience being one of those, that's probably a rate that you could bring, that you could bring people in. Remember, depending on the person that you're looking at, we're not just looking at straight double rooms or low seats and those types of things as well. So, that average rate is each of those rooms across the census there. Brand affiliation, again, I mentioned this earlier, didn't seem to be very important in the local interview process. Again, if it's clean and well-maintained, and if people had a good experience in their first day particularly, people felt like that would be supported. I did mention at dinner and caution here that, obviously, a lot more people are traveling based on rewards points and those types of things now. So, sometimes that's something to think about. I will tell you, probably, at least in my personal travels, the thing that means the most to me are the reviews online. A lot of times, hotels that I might stay at, particularly in rural areas, are not, you know, major brands, and they don't have rewards programs and those types of things. And so, a lot of times, I don't have rewards programs. And so, to be able to take a look at that and to see what other people are saying about their stay is probably more important in my mind, and obviously, each traveler's different. But we would caution that as well. Obviously, some sort of a brand has some appeal to it, whether it's a regional brand or a national brand, helps it out a little bit. But it didn't seem to be important in the local interview process. So, we think that, obviously, based on the data that we put together, that there's a strong likelihood that there could be opportunity. So, financial projections are the next piece of that. And what you see here is actually a proposed hotel cost. And Matt gave a lot of the information that's in here in terms of fees and those types of things from the city. And then, also, this is information from Brymark Building, it's based on a Cobblestone hotel, 33 rooms. Again, that may vary as you're looking with other folks, but they'll be able to draw those same types of conclusions from this. So, this piece is important because this is the information that we used to build the five years of financial projections, the room numbers, the costs, all of those types of things. And you can see that there on the proposed cost. Then, the next couple of pages are the financial projections that we built. Man, that's small up there. Sorry. So, financial projections, a couple of different things to make your way out of. Again, we built this on 33 rooms. We built that on the ADR that we're recommending to you. We built it on the occupancy rates that we think. We looked at year one, month one, for instance, at a 37.5% occupancy rate, so it's going to take a little time for this thing to get on its feet. So, we allow for that in the financials, obviously, as you move forward. And so, obviously, the different seasons of the year, there's more people staying at Thanksgiving and Christmas and those types of things when they come to visit family. And so, there are various things from industry standards with regard to occupancy rates as well. So, those are built in here. One of the things that you'll see on that first page is it is a year one by month total, looking at everything, from cleaning supplies to rooms to salaries to management fee. We did build in a management fee of 6% into this. If you need to decide to go with the Cobblestone, for instance, or others, many of those types of opportunities they suggest to a community or to a region of investors that might be looking to make this investment, that they hire, at least for a short period of time, a management team or a management group to come in and help with that. The next section is a five-year revenue projection, again, for 33 rooms, that's by year. So, that's the difference between those two, and again, looking at those years. And then, the last one is more for investors. What we did here is look at a five-year breakeven analysis. So, what is the absolute most conservative numbers that we can put into this section so that this hotel will break even over a five-year period for investors? So, if you'll notice at the top, if you can see that there, in year one, the occupancy rate is only 49.1%. So, if you go back to the page before, you'll see that we think that the occupancy rate in year one's going to be 63.2%. However, in this particular document, we were being as conservative as possible so that a potential investor could see a very conservative look at what it would take to break even over a five-year breakeven analysis. And so, that's why you see those numbers back down. Overall, I think very good information. I think there's definitely demand based on the local interviews and some of the things that we've seen. We think that the average day rate, the occupancy rate would be something that would be able to support a hotel operation and such. I don't know if you all have questions for me, I'm happy to answer those. We did find a couple of things that I mentioned earlier in the report that need to be picked, and so, we'll do that here in the next day or two, based on input that we get back from Matt, and we'll do a final copy to you if this is close to the final copy or just a couple of things that the rest of us need to be aware of.
Corey, I appreciate your diligence in presenting this. As you were interviewing the folks, what were some of the, I guess, positive feedback you got about our city?
Well, I actually didn't do the interviews, somebody else in our organization did that. I can tell you from reading these, and of course, this is synopsis of some of those things, actually, everything is in there. But I can tell, I mentioned to the group earlier, that it seemed, from the people that we talked to anyway, that there's tremendous support for this. I think the big thing that we heard from the local interviews was that people recognized that would be a big asset to the community, obviously, to be able to have an opportunity for people to stay here, but also then to bring back the revenue that's currently being lost to surrounding communities with the overnight stays and the other, you know, particularly merchants and restaurateurs and that type of thing. So, we did not hear any negative feedback. I mentioned to you a couple of cautions throughout here that we heard that we would probably mention to you anyway, in terms of, again, not being able to attract all of those folks that might go south, that type of thing, no matter what you build here. But other than that, we really didn't receive any negative information at all.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Corey?
I have a couple of questions. I was trying to understand the retail marketplace profile, because it shows that we don't have some businesses that we actually do have in our community, and it looks like we have more of some.
Which page?
Number 26.
Number 26, okay. Okay, so, this is a breakout of the way, we use a database called EzRee. So, this is a breakout, the way Dun &amp; Bradstreet breaks those out. So, it depends on the person's NACs code, or SAIC code, or NACs code, either one, how they're classified. So, you may have a business that classifies in a different, like, for instance, a Lowe's, for instance, or something like that. They could classify hardware, they could classify lumber, they could classify, and lots of different things. So, these are just breakouts that are used on a national level for each community, specific to your community, you have to go back and look and see, you know, how each of those are classified.
Okay. And then, on the top employers, because we have a Centralia School District, public schools, but then we also have the elementary school and the high school. So, how does that work?
That came from a database called A-Z. So, that's how your school district reports employment? I'm trying to find what page that's on here. There it is, yeah. So, that one comes from A-Z databases. Yeah, it's actually the way A-Z databases does that. And, you know, Matt mentioned that to me earlier about one of the things on here that seemed a little bit high, and I mentioned to him, those data, and you can see at the bottom, under source, those things sometimes can be as old as three years.
I think it's like the Chinese family can imagine they had 23 employees.
It's possible, you never know. I love story, Mowley has 120 employees, you wouldn't imagine that. So, it's possible, I mean, you got to think about part-time positions.
Right, and so, like the school district, if we were to look at the entire school district as a whole, we'd need to take those three and add them together.
Correct. I assume that's, I mean, I'd have to ask the school district how they reported that, but I assume that, yeah, this isn't our database, this comes from A-Z, so, but that would be my assumption that they probably would add all of those together. And I'm not sure what they would do with administration. Most of the time, people just break out the school district with one, with all their employees.
Yeah, that's why I didn't understand how the elementary and the high school were separated.
Yeah, I've not seen that, none like that before either. So, it must be, it must have something to do with the way that they reported that to the A-Zs.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's probably not the greatest answer at that point.
So, is there another one?
Any other questions or comments at all?
One or two more questions, if there's, or you want to get started with the regular one?
Mr. Mayor? Is the report available online?
It's in the packet, so it's available now, but we'll put it on, we'll put a direct link to the website.
The list was working on putting on the website earlier, so it may already be there.
Yeah, we, this is, there will be some very minor edits to it after that, so then, yeah. If the, this version's up there, we'll replace it when it's done, so it will be very much open to the public.
Corey, just one question from, I kind of talked about earlier with you, but based on your analysis, the most likely, probably the target range would be that $109 to $129 type of hotel, whatever brand that might be, as opposed to getting something very inexpensive that might catch a different audience.
Well, the danger that you run there is, yeah, it's a delicate balance. I mean, the danger that you run there, though, is you want to make sure that you have something that has the amenities for your demand, right? So, your demand is heavy in business travel, in corporate demand, as well as, you know, you have a lot of tourism, obviously, but the business demand probably is the bigger thing. So, what we heard in the local interviews, when you get a chance to review some of those things, you'll see in there that there was some concern about having a certain level of amenities available to business travelers. And so, you know, the concern might be at that point, if you're looking at an economy scale, for instance, you may or may not have the right mix of amenities to be able to attract those folks to stay there. So, so that's the challenge. And I think, you know, we talked about it at dinner a little bit, I mean, I think, you know, as people travel, even in smaller communities, you know, that range that we, that we're recommending there is based off what people are paying already in this area. So, you've got people that are coming here every day for work that are already traveling and paying that, so they're used to paying that. And so, I don't know if that will necessarily scare them. I think the bigger thing is the ability, if you want to make sure you've got something of quality, because obviously, as you see here, you're 35, 30 seconds from about anything that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I guess.
A little bit after seven o'clock, so I have to call the regular Board of Elder Elegance to order, so call please, though.
Elder and Board.
Elder and Board.
Elder and Board.
Good to see you.
Elder and Board.
Yes. All right, so you have a form of saving to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, and to the republic for which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, I hope you get loaded out there. Thank you. I'll just try to get out of your way here. You just take your time. Thank you. Corey, you're welcome to stay and witness this awesome meeting.
Okay, well, I'm happy to if you need me to. But as you can imagine, in my position, I'm in many council meetings.
I did actually have you on the agenda for a quick, I don't know if anybody from the board had not, does anybody from the board need to ask me any more questions?
I'll stick around, that's fine, I can.
Or, okay. Well, yeah, we'll, I'll call you up in just a little bit, then.
Okay.
And then, we'll finally release you.
Okay, sounds good.
As much as seconds to approve the consent agenda, I want to say this out.
Aye aye. One of the, one of those accounts payable that's in the over $12.50 column includes the payment to, let me make sure I'm telling the truth. I'm trying to figure which you're writing on. Looking for the one to, Little Rock. And that payment is based on, yeah, there it is, for $70,133.60. The reason I'm bringing this up is that payment assumes that we will adopt, that we will approve the change orders. The change orders are, have already been brought to a, the change order that will increase the cost is already been brought to us as part of the second bid. We agreed that we would...
Cover the cost of the flagman.
Thank you, cover the cost of the flagman, and that came out, that amount came out to be about $12,000. And the, and the, actually, I'm sorry, came out to be $17,625. And then, there's a $2,500 deductible. So, that's what I'm going to tell you when we get down to eight D1. So, that cost is in that bill.
So, it was $17,000 for a flagman? Were you naming that?
And that's all one company.
I know.
They were there parts of, parts of six days, I guess, maybe, or...
Maybe I gave a job with a flagman.
No, I think it was maybe five at best, because they, because they weren't there for the last, the last run on Bar Street was, didn't involve that railroad at all, so...
I'd be long to need that once in a while.
Well, there were two guys there.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, no, I, well, that makes all the... That doesn't count the insurance.
Yeah, okay.
A tremendous amount of the cost of this project was just that, maybe like, same
All right. It's everywhere, you know, that property.
Yeah.
So motion would be ordered to approve those? If there are no further questions? Cori?
One second.
I have a motion second to approve, accounts payable over twelve fifty, an amount of four hundred, two thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents, although as a favor, say aye.
Aye aye.
Post. Thank you. Comments from citizens? All our citizens up and left? That's right. Close that portion, and presentation by Cori of the Growth Services Group.
We, we, you did the full, um, thirty-minute, you did a great job, is there anything, is there anything the board would like to hear again, highlighted, um, you know, maybe just the conclusions, real quick, again, or is it anything that you guys wanted to see here that you didn't have a chance to hear in the, uh, the part, if you could, you know, if we weren't able to make it here for the early meeting? You're good. Okay, okay, all right, very, I don't want, didn't want to have to make you do it again.
I just had one question, and obviously, having lots of experience doing those, you know, finally, in your completion, could you say that it would be attractive?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, I, and the actual wording is in there, we did, we thought it needed to be a mid-level, can't, we, we didn't think that in economy scale would be what you, you know, based on what we're hearing from the local interviews and the demand that you have here, we didn't think that would be a good thing, so we think that mid-level would be where you need to be, and we think, based on the numbers that we see, you've got the potential for an average daily rate and occupancy rate that we, that we've supported over five years, and you'll see the, you know, the breakouts in the projections, so, um, yeah, and, you know, I mentioned that dinner tonight, uh, with some of the folks, you know, it's always a difficult one for us, you'll see disclaimers in there from us, because that's information we're looking at today, and obviously tomorrow, all kinds of economic things can happen, and so that's tough for us, the real piece that's tough for us is the management of the hotel. I mentioned at dinner tonight, there are a number of people that are doing things, you know, to run hotels very well, and there are the other side of that also, and so we can't, you know, I can't run for them, I can't anticipate how someone's going to run it, all I can do is give you sort of a, a third-party look at those numbers, so, you know, one example I used earlier was a hotel that we're familiar with, in northeast Missouri, that was just purchased, and a gentleman is, uh, you know, has contracts with, uh, that he's worked on over years, with, uh, traveling ball teams, for instance, and so his Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday occupancy is through the roof, because, you know, three and four and five years out, he has contracts with traveling sports teams of all kinds that are coming through and filling up all of his rooms, and, you know, so, so there are people that are doing those kinds of things, and then there are people that are just sort of signing, saying, hey, here's our hotel, click on the open line, and kind of waiting for people to come, so that's always our challenge, you know, we think the numbers make sense based on what we see, and we gave you, you know, sort of the data that we used to arrive at those conclusions, so hopefully you'll see those same things in that data, but at that point, you know, it's employment. One of the other things I mentioned, your initial conversations have been with cobblestone, I know there are other people that have similar models, I like that model that looks for local investment, I think that's a key to your community, I think a lot of times you'll see people that might come into a community and, you know, you know, bigger firms will come in and go to a local bank and they'll leverage, you know, as high as they can on that facility, and if things don't work out, you know, they're out the door, you've got a facility that's decaying in your community, that's not what anybody wants, so oftentimes what you'll see in this sort of, uh, scenario where you've got local investment is people, first of all, people are in the game, right, they've got some skin in the game, so they're going to support it, you know, local contractors hopefully will be used as a part of the building process, so they'll continue to support it, and so, obviously, if things get tight, you've got local people, they're going to help with that, and they're not just going to walk into the bank and set the keys on the desk and say, see you later, so, but I, I think, uh, from what we see from the numbers, um, you've certainly got the demand, um, for the hotel right now, so...
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
I thought, uh, I thought the process, and I, I was mentioning, he was, uh, he gave me the list of the restaurants, and there's a couple I missed that had been, have since closed, because the databases are, unless you want to pay for the million-dollar database, we didn't, uh, so we'll get those things tidied up, and, and I'm either going to have to talk to Danny, or I'm going to have to lower the number of firefighters that we have on that, uh, major employers, so, since we have forty-nine, so I'm guessing that's actually Boone County and the number of the, combined in Centralia?
Yeah. I'm not sure who reported that.
Yeah, well, that, that, that's, that's how it came out of the database, so, so they got an interesting number in there, so I, I can't blame you for that data that, but, so we're getting, cleaning up those couple things, get the, uh, the credit and the chamber pieces paid for, and then it is, uh, it's, uh, we, the, the city will, along with, um, private investors, look for somebody to pick this and run, um, and that's, it's, it's nice that we have this piece of data, and I think it'll be very, very useful. Uh, my understanding is that one firm is still interested, uh, they've got a little bit of a head start on other firms, but we are definitely open to the best, you know, the best project, um, and, uh, and so I appreciate the work you did, and, um...
Thank you, I appreciate all your help, I mentioned that earlier, for some of your work here, I thanked Matt for his help, he helped us with a lot of the information, I appreciate that, and also wanted to thank you all for partnering with us, uh, obviously there are a number of people out there that do what we do, uh, and so I appreciate you choosing what I consider to be a local company, because we're right down the road, so thank you very much for that, and we appreciate the opportunity, I mentioned to Matt, we've got lots of other, we do a lot of work in workforce, and lots of other feasibility studies and those types of things, so in fact, we just completed a workforce survey for the Northeast Missouri Development Partnership, which included Boone County, so you were included in that, uh, already, and so we do those kinds of things from time to time, and so if there's anything we can help you with in the future, we appreciate it, but thank you very much for choosing Growth Services Group, our team appreciates it greatly, so...
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I say good night.
Hope you get out there, sir, without my thing?
I think so, yeah.
All right.
Appreciate it.
My trauma light. We have a report from the Chamber of Commerce in your packet. Any questions on the chamber report?
I went to the last meeting, I thought, uh, you know, it was a good discussion about all the different events downtown, and how the, well, of course, the tractor parade, I thought was phenomenal, turned out phenomenal, that, um, there was a, you mentioned about the, uh, effort of the city clerk helping out getting some food trucks to, I mean, getting business license handles quickly, so, and we kept saying, so I think everybody agreed that that was a positive.
It's a positive, yeah.
And the, and the little red wagon, wagon parade is, is building momentum, so...
Yeah.
It was a cute event.
Yep. All right. Action Agenda Finance and Commissions Licensing, nothing scheduled, but legal, repealing ordinance twenty-eight forty-two, and calling a municipal election on April fifth, two thousand and sixteen, for adopting a sales tax for the sale of vehicles, since the ordinance requires two readings, I'm sure Merrick's got an explanation for us on that, yes?
Uh, y'all may have seen what's been in the, uh, probably the newspapers, uh, about, about things, and, uh, Karen Miller, the Boone County Commissioner for the Southern District, uh, in our district, that, uh, she's been a supporter of this, uh, putting it, uh, Boone County putting it on for a local sales tax on the April ballot, and has been asking cities to do the same, using the same language. Uh, I spoke to the attorney for the county, the county councillor is there, is the title is, CJ Dykhouse, and he said that, uh, he was not basing his opinion about using the positive language, uh, on the charter versus the third, fourth-class city, statutory city, which is what I was concerned about, uh, I spoke to him, and he, he said that he was really basing it on, on, uh, an attorney who, his opinion, who, who had been, uh, I would say, uh, he's well-qualified, does a good job, uh, and he made an opinion, and CJ followed that, believed that it was a good opinion. So what I'm asking, I guess I've changed my mind about this, is, is this the bottom line, this conclusion I have reached, that, uh, based on what, uh, Karen Miller and the Boone County Commissioner is asking for, um, and, and based on the fact of, uh, that it's not, uh, contingent on, it's not based on the charter city versus the statutory city, it's an argument, uh, calling the opinion that, that we should repeal the ordinance twenty-eight forty-two and, and adopt the positive language, because, um, the opinion said that, uh, it was, it was substantially like the language, only it was written in a positive way, which is the way Boone County does it, we, um, the way they're proposing it, it'd be done, I'm not sure whether Matt has spoken to Karen Miller about, um, okay, about their final decision, which is Friday, next week, but, uh, the way I look at it is that, uh, probably the more cities that adopted, probably the more pressure will be on Boone County to, uh, to follow through with what they were proposing to do, which is, uh, another ballot April two, we're talking about the local sales tax, the county sales tax, and, and for the Centralia would be the city sales tax, uh, the only ones, uh, motor vehicles, outboard motors, uh, trailers, um, so I, I would have been that, that you should adopt the, this ordinance, and which would repeal the ordinance you adopted earlier in, earlier this month.
All right. Do you have any questions on that? Oliver Borat? I, I do have one question. Have, have, we heard from Columbia and Boone County, whether they're actually going to put it on this tab or not?
Columbia is not.
Columbia is not?
Unless, unless the Tribune got, I had not talked to them directly, since I, the, Merrick told me about the article through about the Tribune, I didn't have time to, to, to talk to Karen or, uh, but, I mean, the county had come to us and said, let's everybody do it in April.
Right.
Uh, the city, and I'm going based on what I read in the Tribune, but it, it, they, the city of Columbia doesn't want to clog the ballot up, basically, with, they already have, uh, they kind of have a policy of not putting things on the April ballot if the school district has a bond issue.
Columbia's school district, right.
Columbia's school district, right. Columbia's school district and the Columbia, the city of Columbia aren't affected, you know, it doesn't matter to them whether we have it on the ballot or not, obviously, um, the other, the other piece of evidence, information that was asked for, and I, and I do not know exactly how much it's going to cost us, or do not have a good guess on how much it's going to cost us to add to the ballot, I do know that we will be charged.
Right.
Um, and, uh, I just didn't get around, I did not get around getting that answer back, um, it, it, uh, obviously they're closed today, and I can get to it Tuesday or through Friday, the last week.
Well, what the paper sounded like was that neither one has made a decision, but Columbia was leaning against it, Boone County was leaning for it, but the decisions were going to be made this week or next week.
Probably next week, uh, at the latest, and, and so I would say that, uh, my, my understanding is, based on what the, the Columbia paper said, that, uh, that the, uh, it would not be, it was up in the air, you're correct about, about the county, uh, the city of Columbia has decided not to put it on the ballot, I think both of the articles talked about that.
Well, they hadn't, the council hadn't made a decision yet, but...
Well, well, it was, it was...
The city staff had made the decision that they shouldn't.
I guess that's maybe the way to say it, uh, I would say that, that they'll probably follow the advice of the staff on that.
Perhaps, you know, perhaps the staff is repeating what they got, the impression they got from the elected officials, so...
That's true.
And they have a ballot issue, so, they've got a couple other things on the ballot.
If, if this is voted down by the, the citizens, uh, it is possible to put it on in, in June, or in August, or November.
And there will be elections.
There, there will be elections anyway, so...
Yeah, but we will, but, yeah, and that's, that is true, there will be an August election for state primaries, and there will be, obviously, November ballot, uh, we will still have to pay, um, for an election, even though they're already doing that.
But it, it reduces our cost, as opposed to if there wasn't an election scheduled.
Well, the thing about that is, is that because, that, like, you would think so, but you also have, they split the cost.
Right, they split the cost.
Well, yeah, the, the, um, that includes the fact that there'll be more particip, there'll be more, they'll need more, um, judges, et cetera, because there'll be more people attending the polls, especially in, in November, because when we did this in Fulton for a smoking ordinance, and it came up the same year, is that the, the cost to us was almost as much as a regular, um...
April election.
A regular April election. Now, that's a different county, different system, um, different election, but I don't know that it'll reduce it as much as you think.
It still should be a cheaper to put it on the April ballot than it would be to put it on the August or November ballot.
There would be virtually no additional cost, there'll be maybe a slight addition to, to what we already have to have an election.
Right.
And that's what we're already paying for.
Right, right, which we can't really...
The only thing we're changing here is just the wordage from the negative to positive direction.
Right.
It's already kind of voted to put it on the ballot.
Yes. So this language follows what Boone County recommends, which is following the, uh, the attorney's recommendation.
Oliver Borat, would you introduce this one, please?
Yeah, bill number?
Twenty-seven ninety.
I move that bill number twenty-seven ninety be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second to bill number twenty-seven ninety be given its first reading by title only, although as a favor, say aye.
Aye aye.
Post. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, ordinance providing for submission of a proposal to continue the application and collection of a local sales tax on the titleing of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer to the qualified voters of the city of Centralia, Missouri, for their approval at the general municipal election called, and to be held in the city of Centralia, Missouri, on April fifth, two thousand and sixteen. I move that bill number twenty-seven ninety be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion second to bill number twenty-seven ninety be given its second reading by title only, although as a favor, say aye. Aye aye. Post. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, ordinance providing for the submission of a proposal to continue the application and collection of a local sales tax on the titleing of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer to the qualified voters of the city of Centralia, Missouri, for their approval at the general municipal election called, and to be held in the city of Centralia, Missouri, on April fifth, two thousand and sixteen. I move that bill number twenty-seven ninety be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion second to bill number twenty-seven ninety be adopted by roll call vote, although as a favor, say aye.
Aye aye.
Post, roll call vote, is that...
Alderman Lane?
Four.
Alderman Madley?
Yes.
Alderman Borat?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven ninety passes, now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-eight forty-three.
Thank you. Number two, authorizing the mayor of city of Centralia to release Illinois power marketing of columns that... Collinsville, Illinois from their letter of credit and accepting a required standby letter of credit from Dynergy Marketing and Trade LLC of Houston, Texas in its place.
We actually adopted an ordinance to adopt, to allow the. Change in the, to amend our purchase power agreement. Dynergy is, Illinois Power Marketing is a wholly owned creation of Dynergy. And after discussions, our consultant Bob Harbor has been encouraging. Dynergy to support directly with the letter of credit. And I. He feels it is much, a much stronger position to hold this letter of credit than the one from Illinois Power Marketing. Because the actual assets in that corporation are not nearly as strong as Dynergy. So we're served much better, this is for the final year of our contract. If. Dynergy were to go bankrupt and we weren't able to buy power from them anymore, they didn't exist as a company. This letter of credit would cover our losses until we found somebody who could pay for, who would sell us energy at a comparable price. So this is a better letter of credit. We don't have to adjust our agenda because our our ordinance, because actually, you know, Illinois Power Marketing is a company, an entity of energy. And that's what all the other cities that are in this are doing, so I feel very confident. We accept this letter of credit, we can, we can, we can enforce it if necessary, that in the next, this is for that last period. Or this actually runs until January, then we'll need a sort of a bridge until May of two thousand seventeen, at which case, at which point we'll start a new contract. At this point, it looks like it's going to be with Constellation slash Exelon. So we won't be getting power from Dynergy if we if we proceed at the rate, at the, in the course we're going right now, which I. Essentially, we're in the contract stage unless that falls apart. So a motion and second, do you?
Okay. I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor. Release Illinois Power Marketing. Except the.
Second.
I have a motion second to make that change in the layer of credit, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Propose.
I already went through kind of what we're doing on this one, but basically these are approving two change orders, one of which is a seventeen thousand four hundred twenty five dollar increase, which we knew was coming, we just didn't know it would be that much of a hit. It was roughly about what we guessed with flagmen, and then there's a twenty five hundred dollar deduct. That is what it is worth, little rough not to come back to town and seed and straw and get the grass growing in the places where we tore it up to put in the. To where we have the pits for mooring.
And so our crews are going to go out and regrade and seed it?
Right.
Okay.
And I feel comfortable that our actual cost would be less than twenty five hundred dollars.
Does it need a motion for that one, too?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to accept, to approve change order one, then change order two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the change orders. As noted, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. All right. The old business. The new business. Appointments, I'm still in the process of looking for a replacement on the library board for Larry Riker. I had somebody in mind and spoke to them and they changed their mind. Lot of stuff going on in their life right now, so not able to add something else.
Can tell the library board people?
What's that?
Ask the library board people to make some guesses?
I'm working with them on that, too.
Oh.
So we're still got a vacancy on the library board, if anyone's interested or if anyone that's interested, please let me know. All right, Matt, what do you think?
I sent an email last week, double checking Credy and MMO. Tim, you've already registered for MMO, right? Not anywhere registering?
No.
But you want to go?
Well, I think I did.
He responded to me, they responded to me and I'll send the registration.
Okay, so you got everyone sent their information to Heather.
Anybody else want to come?
When was it?
Ten Fulton on the.
Twenty seventh.
Wednesday, twenty eighth, Monday.
We used to show up there about five, five thirty and then have dinner and then the meeting starts. And then we'll go.
You can put it down there. Maybe.
I don't remember, I think it started at six.
There is a cost, so we have to know yes or no.
Well, there is a cost.
There is a cost, it's fifteen dollars.
But it's not your cost.
The city will, the city will pay you. We will get. Okay. I think we got more than fifteen dollars. The city will pay for you, we just need, we don't want to write him a check for somebody who doesn't go. So you're a yes?
I'm not sure, yes.
All right.
I don't know what the weather will be.
Well, it's true. I think it's gonna be forty degrees.
Sunny and.
All right, excellent, we'll try and coordinate rights. And then. Credy, Tim is bringing a guest, I'm bringing a guest, David and Andrea are both going.
I cannot go.
You cannot? And anybody else? Okay, so. We will have, we have right now three open spots and I think I mentioned, if anyone have a problem with us making that available to the department heads.
No.
Fire, police, electric, water.
Yeah, perfect.
Right.
You're you're invited, right? Yeah.
And that is this Saturday?
Yes.
All right. And I guess I got, I don't know whether, I guess I'll do it here under new business, we've got a couple of caught expenses that. The emergency expenses essentially from the the water department. And I think I, you know, I just realized, did we, did we already talk about the surge protector of the water park? They, they're, we talked about the hammering sound. They have a, their, the repair for that would be thirty one hundred dollars. By Flynn Drilling Company, they're the, the, the surgery leaf valve is, oh, I'm sorry, it's two thousand dollars, I've got two things, that's, that's two thousand dollars. Sixteen hundred dollars on the valve, fifty dollars on piping and thirty, three hundred fifty dollars labor to install. To the best of our knowledge, that's the sole source, and then there's a, we need to purchase a four inch meter, water meter. The cost for that is thirty one hundred dollars, that is so, that is, we need to buy the meter that goes with our system. That's a, that's a chance. The the meter is a terrible chance, so those are both important processes. I would like, if possible, to get a motion since those, we didn't get those. And they're not ready for, they're not ready for, they're not ready for the over twelve fifty, but I'd like to make sure that's okay, we go ahead and purchase that.
Did we find out what was wrong with the well that was causing the problem?
No, it's still theories, there's, the actual cause, the only, I mean, the best thing that Mike can come up with is it has. The only thing that, the only major change was that twelve inch line that went in. On on Jefferson Street by, by, I mean, on. Higher Burton over by the water tower. So that's. He cannot come up with a, they, he's been there, the Gary Dewitt, Flynn from Flynn Drilling, he's had a number of people out there to look at it. And when you, it comes, it happens when you shut down the pump for wall three. But the actual cause, they have not come up with it.
So at least they can serve the protector.
Yeah. Essentially, yeah. And if anything is making that much of an impact, not be good with this. So. We believe that this will solve the problem and. At that point. You know, if it's, if it solves the problem, knowing exactly why the problem started is less important, but it's still, it'd be still valuable if we could figure out where that was, why it started. So this is the best solution we can come up with. We, they, they're pretty confident this will be, this will solve the problem. We'll keep trying to figure out what's causing it, though, too.
So we're not sure that this is it?
Well, we're sure that this will solve it, we're not sure that what's causing it, that water hand, what what's causing the, the, the.
Hydraulic.
Yeah. It's obviously a hydraulic, yeah, the, the water coming from both sides and causing a, increasing the pressure that kind of shapes the system right there. Where there's a gap or a bubble or or what's causing it to do that, we don't know. So what I want to specify, we need to specify.
And the meter goes with this?
No, the meter's separate, it's a failing meter. On a four inch water line, it has nothing to do with the, the, the hammer at the well number three. It also has nothing to do particularly with twelve inch line going in, and obviously has nothing to do with the sewer.
There's not a meter already there.
So what?
There's not a meter already there.
It's failing.
It's failing.
Yeah, that's why we need to replace it.
How long, how long do these meters last? How long is this one there?
I did not ask.
I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah.
I don't think it's anything that happens all that often.
No, no, they're usually fifteen, twenty years is easily for a meter, four inches, I think. My impression is they don't last quite as long.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Merrick?
Would you like us to tell you that it's okay?
Oh, that's good. Yeah, well, that's good motion.
Okay, okay.
A motion? A motion second that it's okay? All those in favor of that?
Thank you.
Yes, for purchase of both of those. All right, now it's your turn, Merrick.
I, I don't have anything other than, I imagine Heather's going to mention about the closing filing date being next Tuesday.
This Tuesday.
Tomorrow.
Just tomorrow.
Excuse me, tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow, not, not next Tuesday.
You just tested it, we're paying attention, right?
I, I got a question for you. Who's filed so far?
Jessica and Lincoln, work three, we don't have anybody for work one or work two.
Okay. Papers, scissors, rocks, see who goes to work one or work two. All right, any other as mayorizes? Can you, Alderman have anything?
How are we doing on salt and stuff?
We're fine, we've got another shipment coming tomorrow, but we were full, we had, we had enough room for, we had enough room for this salt before it came, but. Realized the snow event, we're, we're fine. And we've got. If I bought any more calcium chloride, I'd feel like. Be upset, or.
We're not planning on needing any water.
Go ahead.
It's supposed to be bright and sunny out there.
All right. I do have two applications for employment for the fire department. I'm not going to make recommendations to appoint them tonight because they're still pending their pre-screen physicals. So once we get those results back, one of them is Timothy Power, the other one is Brian Booker. So those are probably on the agenda to appoint as firefighters next month.
Do you want to anticipate they're being prepared before? February the fifteenth?
We need, we don't need your partner right here, we need you, we. Yeah.
National Department.
Are we weak? Do you anticipate them being completed before the first meeting in February? I don't know what the, I don't know what their schedules are and all that stuff, so I think, I think they can wait till.
During.
Next month. Just kind of give you all a heads up on that. Any other as mayorizes?
We did get an application in for a. Annexation and rezon, or annexation and mission zone, it's a small parcel. At the, well, the patents who annexed that, that hole, the donut, well, that property. That property where they're living on is just north of there, and their son wants to annex enough to build a house, get sewer. And then leave the rest of the property in the county so he can hunt and. Other county activities.
Okay. So that means we'll have a P and Z meeting at some point?
In February the fourth.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Technology committee meets on Thursday at four.
Okay. So February fourth, six o'clock is the P and Z meeting. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Motion?
We don't, we don't have to say here's the leak.
Somebody's got to make a motion.
I'm not a motion, will you adjourn?
I have a motion second to adjourn, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
All right. A vote, can we vote to adjourn?